...the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chris Ng?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Here. Not much on the agenda, is there any audience comment or any agenda items right now? Redevelopment Authority, or Anna?
We had an auction on Saturday, and that was for 714-716 North Seventh Street, like here in the city. And I have a resolution tonight because we did have a successful bidder for $2,000, and we need to pass tonight our typical resolution that ratifies the auction because of it being a co-op, or I should say, with the redevelopment authority. All the funds from this auction would go back into the redevelopment authority's private bank to then be used for the next project and property project. So I will read the resolution. Whereas the City of Sunbury has requested that the City of Sunbury Redevelopment Authority acquire and remove blighted properties from the City of Sunbury, and whereas the City of Sunbury, through the City of Sunbury Redevelopment Authority, has acquired the blighted property located at 714-716 North Seventh Street, Sunbury, Pennsylvania. Whereas the City of Sunbury Redevelopment Authority held a public auction on October 22nd, 2016, for the sale of the property located at 714-716 North Seventh Street. Whereas this resolution is intended to ratify and affirm the actions of the City of Sunbury Redevelopment Authority. Therefore, it is resolved tonight that the City of Sunbury hereby ratifies and affirms the public auction held on October 22nd at 714-716 North Seventh Street. The proceeds from the sale of the property located at 714-716 North Seventh Street shall be placed in the City of Sunbury Redevelopment Authority bank account for use of future blighted property projects, and this resolution will be made available at the City clerk's office. I just been looking for a motion then to...
Yes, second?
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Chris Ng?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Unfinished business, Rick, approval of FNB loan for fire department communication?
Apparently, I'm the resolution reader tonight.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So we have a couple of resolutions tonight. We have another resolution. This one is to go ahead and enter into the loan for the fire department with First National Bank. The bank needs a formal document in order to proceed. Whereas the Sunbury Fire Department desires to purchase communication equipment, and whereas the City of Sunbury has agreed to obtain a loan to purchase said communication equipment on behalf of the Sunbury Fire Department, and whereas the City of Sunbury has reviewed multiple bids from local banks, and has determined First National Bank to be the successful bidder. I apologize, tonight, for that. Whereas the City of Sunbury desires to approve the bid of a term loan for $117,190 for 16 months at 2.5 percent fixed interest rate that is tax exempt per year, to complete the purchase of communication equipment on behalf of the Sunbury Fire Department. Therefore, it's resolved that the City of Sunbury hereby authorizes Mayor Chris Ng to sign all necessary paperwork to complete the transaction. A copy of the executed loan document will be kept and made available in the City clerk's office.
In a second.
Ister?
Yes.
Chris Ng?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
I'm up again.
The next one, yep.
Okay, third time's the charm, let's see if we can get this one. This one is a resolution to go ahead and execute the streetlight services agreement that was discussed a couple meetings ago. This is to replace streetlights as well as to convert some of the existing streetlights into a more energy efficient system. Whereas the City of Sunbury has requested PPL Electric Utilities Corporation to install new streetlights, as well as convert some or all of its existing replaced to a more energy efficient lighting system. Whereas the City of Sunbury desires to enter into a streetlight services agreement to complete the transaction. It's hereby resolved that the City of Sunbury authorizes the execution of the streetlight services agreement with PPL Electric Utilities Corporation. Mayor Chris Ng shall have full authority to sign all necessary paperwork to complete the transaction. A copy of the executed streetlight services agreement will be available at the City clerk's office.
The motion accept?
I have a question before we vote.
Go ahead.
I talked to Jim the other day. Is this where the part, Jimmy, is the lights are 10 years and more, we possibly could pay for it?
Yeah, but the light been stalled in the last 10 years, it's prorated. So it was installed seven years ago, we would pay for 30 percent of the estimated cost of replacing it. And most of the lights in the city, they're gonna be able to tell us, okay?
Before we do it.
Before we do it. But probably 99 percent of them are all, lights have been there forever, ever, ever.
Well, I was just concerned because two means in the past, Rick, that there's gonna be a cost to the city, but he's exact word is no. There's no upfront cost to the city. I said a cost to the city, I didn't say upfront.
Okay, anyhow, we'll know those numbers before we vote.
So, do you bring them back and then we vote on them?
We're voting on the contract right now.
Well, I'd like them numbers to come back and then we'll vote on them. Since we were told no, and the public was told no.
Neil, you were at the meeting in Bloonsburg, remember that meeting?
I was at a seminar.
Yeah, that was the meeting.
There was no contract to go, you two were, this is all on your own, you showed up to the meeting and you voted on it.
Dale.
No, we don't, Dale.
Mr. Henry.
Just don't, Mr. Henry.
If you've been paying attention at that seminar, they explained everything to us that evening.
I'm not denying that.
Okay.
Did any of us, other than when it was emailed, even know this contract was going on? No. I think I told you, didn't I, Mary, that I've been working on it since the 29th of June?
I don't know about 29th of June, what you say, working on it. Anytime we have to save money, anybody can find a way to save money, Dale.
I'm not against saving money, I was just asking a question. Two means, you know, I was hoping no. Now it says yes.
Well, but my question is, these are only, only lights that have been replaced within the last 10 years?
Yes.
Well, what can that be, five of them or...
There's red dots on the thing that we found when we looked at them, and we don't even have to replace them, depending on the draft. And then, okay...
But it can't be, I mean, you're...
I'm not, I'm just saying that, we were told no, a month ago. But I had a question, Rick. A couple of months ago, I came to you with Hugh, Jimmy, the guy from the solar company, Jeff, remember when he met with us and dated?
Yep, yep.
He said most lights were getting charged a flat rate of 10 kilowatts per hour. There were some lights we were being charged 35, and he didn't understand. I specifically asked you, Rick, are you looking into it? You said yes. Eric, I did it down there in the mayor's office. You can ask Eric once he speaks up, he can. I asked you specifically, are you guys checking it? And you said Eric's looking into it. How did we ever make out with that? Are we still paying more? Looking into what? Why are we paying more for the 35 kilowatts on a flat rate of most of them 10? I don't have a clue, Dale. I, if you told me that, I, I went over my head. No, I, no, I never heard you say that. Yeah, well, it was set, okay.
Well, that's what we were talking about, we couldn't identify where all the poles were.
And, so, most of them were 35?
They must have identified that for this bid from PPL, no?
They can't.
The poles that we didn't have identified before, they're definitely two different prices.
They're all, they're all PPL, and some of those red dots that Rick's referring to may be the ones that are owned by the City of Sunbury, because they won't take and do the ones on market front, because the ornamental lights, they won't touch.
Right.
Initially, at the seminar, they mentioned they were gonna take and do that, but then he found out there's too many different, each town has their own little light, so it was too much of a hassle, so they got away from that.
Right.
So right now, all of them, poles that PPL owns.
That's the old wooden ones in the neighborhood.
Exactly.
Right, but so then we still have some of them being charged 35 kilowatts versus the 10. So we never got that result, is my question. Dale, I don't even know that I was at that meeting with you guys in the solar... You was, you were at the front counter, I asked you. Yeah, well, I, I, and I just understood what you had.
We went back and looked through the bills and tried to figure it out, couldn't figure it out for the building, the way the building is set up, we couldn't figure it out.
Right, so I was with there when he, when Dave and Jeff was there. Okay, thank you, Dale. I make a motion to go through with that resolution.
Second.
I still got one more question. So, is this, is this impacted at all?
We, we...
The 35, the two different fees that we pay now?
Yes.
The polls?
Yes. I, I don't know, I don't know what he's talking about. I honestly don't know what he's talking about. Dave, Dave, you sat there with him specifically pointing it out.
No, but I don't, we, to this day, I don't...
But to his point, that was, so he said to us, we, he said to us, we should check it out. I happened to see Rick, I asked Rick, he must have already known about it, because he said Eric was already looking into it. Looking into the changing of the lights to LED, all the high pressure circuit. That's what I thought you were asking. I wasn't... I specifically said to you about the 10 and 35.
But getting back to my question, is that the 35 cent poles and the regular poles, or just the regular?
There's two issues here. PPL owns the ball, okay?
Right.
Right now, we're doing is changing them to LED.
That's all of them, no matter what they're, they're voicing about.
Yes, exactly. So if there's, if it's being overcharged, now there'll be adjustment made, I think to go back three years, but that should be looked into. But when you sit and talk to Jeff, Jeff Lambert, okay, you could ask Jeff the same questions I could ask Jeff.
What was that?
Why are you being charged?
He pointed it out to us, he didn't know what. He told us that we should go back and try to figure out why we're being overcharged. I mentioned it to Rick, and he said Eric was looking into it.
But anyway, this is all, we're talking all light...
No, it's nothing to do with this.
Right, that's two separate issues. Now we're talking all, what's gonna be presented right now is for all light poles, not just camo. Any light pole that PPL owns.
Exactly.
Which is all those old ones in the neighborhood.
500 and what?
594.
There.
Right now. Could be more complicated than that.
That doesn't count, that doesn't count with like market street.
No.
Right, but that'd be the new ornament ones that we've been in the last couple years.
Well, no poles that we own, they won't change a head in any of them.
So it's all Front Street, pretty much market?
And Chester.
And Chester.
Well, Chester's already done. Part of Marcus done, outer Morgan Street's done, so those places are done.
Okay.
Dave?
Yes.
Only part of Front Street, though, is ornamental lights, the rest, well, two are all wooden poles.
Right, that's true. And that's, that's about 192. All right. Little motion, or what do we have?
We just need a vote. Ready?
All right.
Chris Ng?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
Henry?
No.
Ister?
Yes.
New business approval to pay invoice, is that?
We have council payable bills, so 101,272 dollars and 97 cents for the general fund, and we have for the, for 2,678 dollars and 9 cents. I'd like you to make the motion that we pay that.
Kramer?
Yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Chris Ng?
Yes.
2017 budget, Beth?
Yes. The treasurer's office and I, we've been working on this budget for a while. We've worked with each one of the department heads, everybody who knew their revenue and expenses, and treasurer put it together. We're off 100...
99,750.
99,000.
35 dollars.
Which would mean, if we make that up in tax increase, it will be 1.75. I'd like to make a motion that we pass the budget on the first reading with a 1.75 tax increase, which we have until the end of the year to work on the budget and get it out with revenue and expenses.
Well, the biggest expense is the police department.
Right, that's, that's the biggest thing, the police department, the new police officers and equipment and such.
And if we, we actually even have a meeting tomorrow to talk about the contract for the first time in eight months, but that'll give us like six months, six weeks, and we still ought to be able to pass this the second reading in November, so we don't have to go to Christmas Eve like we have the last couple of years or something like that. But that, hopefully, if we get some, a handle on the contract, and if we get a handle on some of the set of legal issues, that the legal expenses are just unbelievable, maybe we can get them to stop doing some things and get, you know, get everybody to work in the same direction. So anyway, my goal is to work on the police budget, try to get that down, and maybe even get rid of all the taxes, but I really do think we could probably buy the, not the 14th, it might be like the 27th, 28th meeting, last meeting in November, whether we're able, 28th, we're gonna be able to pass a budget realistically. So if you want to, maybe you can think about sometime in the next three or four weeks, having a public meeting if you want to, or maybe by then we can get it settled and don't need one as far as that goes, but, but we're gonna do our best, see if we can't get it out of the police department, and I have budgeted for two new officers, so we'll see how that works.
All set.
Yeah, we really don't wanna raise taxes, we don't have to, so that's our goal with this.
Rechner?
This is the first reading, right? Yes. Okay, yes.
Henry?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Chris Ng?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
And the audience comment? Yes, ma'am, just give us your name.
Yeah, that's...
You'll be next, go ahead.
I'm just, I had talked to Cheryl down south, and asked if the police department and the municipality would be interested in doing theme trees up at the Hillary Road Council. They're, we're putting up 13 trees, and we're having a tree lighting service with caroling up there, and we were wondering if the City of Sunbury would be interested in doing a tree that's in the municipality.
Where they're gonna be?
They'll be inside, the trees are set up and pre-lit, so they would just need to decorate them.
In the hospital?
Right, and I really feel like this would be in the Hill House, I'm sorry.
They saw in the hospital brown, yeah.
Yeah, I know where you mean.
And we are having like refreshments, caroling, is there anything else going on up there? No? So I just think it would be nice, I think it would be an extension of the police department and the city.
Do you need any trees at this point?
We have 13 trees, but we can always use more if we have any.
What date is it?
We are opening it up on, what's the date that it is? I think it's November 27th. So anywhere from November 1st up to the 26th, you can decorate the tree.
Okay.
And you can take the tree down like...
28, tree lighting, 28.
The tree lighting, so...
So you need decoration?
No, we need you to go up and decorate the tree. It hasn't been themed, though, and like municipality will do when I try to tell them down, you know, go and get some matchbox cars, the little yellow ones, put Sunbury Municipality on it, or, you know, be creative about it.
That stuff from the tree that we did before.
Oh, absolutely, be creative, we're gonna judge them, and I just think it'll be fun, and it'll be in connection, too, with the police department, with all the tension going on with the community and everything that goes on here. I think it would be a fun thing to do, other than just argue all the time.
That would be a good idea. Well, I told you earlier, I know how, how...
Yeah, yeah.
Even Mr. Scudwell.
Lovely, you can do a tree like that.
Scud's tree.
All right?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
And the other thing is, is Jimmy?
Yes.
I forgot when you said, I went down there again on Waterington, and those weeds are getting out of control again. Did you, when did you say you guys were gonna go over there?
I hope you're over here, I'll check them off tomorrow.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
In the back?
My name is Janet Bynum, and I live in Sunbury, and I live on Fourth Street. The people on Fourth Street...
Can you move up a little bit, they can't hear you up front?
I lived on Fourth Street in front of CVX. For three years, we had attendants that were living beside us that are very disrespectful. They turned around, they damaged an 81-year-old's property for unknown reasons why, and this year it got extremely bad. We've gotten told to call the cops, we've gotten told to go to the mayor, we've gotten told to go to the code officer. We've done this. It had escalated. Back in May, they started a fight with my husband for no reason. They turned around, they were playing around with personal property online, they vandalized my fence, which I got told I'm stuck fixing myself. This gentleman here, they turned around, they almost hit him with a truck, a vehicle. He ended up calling the cops, and they tried to start a fight with him. These people are starting bonfires like you would not believe, and I'm not talking about just a foot up in the air, I'm talking several feet up in the air. They're burning everything. They are loud, they party, they, they're just obnoxious people, and they have trash everywhere. So Joe is aware of this, Mike's aware of this, everybody's aware of this, it's pretty bad, I'm on a name base with everybody. We're coming to you to see about possibly getting this property. The attendants are under a nuisance law, we're looking to see if the property under nuisance property as well, to be able to get these people out. I got told that they were verbally evicted, which means nothing. We just, we want something done, because right now I don't feel safe at my house, my husband works third chef. I turned around, my vehicles are in hiding, because just two, three weeks ago, they started another fight with my husband, and they actually terroristic threatened him, and he did, they did get a fine, and I'm trying to protect my vehicles, you know, I bought brand-new vehicles, I'm a hard-working, you know, person, you know, citizen here in Sunbury, I paid my taxes, I go to work, I keep my mouth shut, I respect everybody, and in return, I have to live in fear, and this is getting ridiculous, and this has been going on, and we came to try to get the property under nuisance for quite a while, and we wanna see something happen.
Well, it's like you said, the code officer's aware of it, they've written fines, the police department, or whatever, we've written fines, because people don't get along together, you really can't, you can only do what the laws are written about. So I don't really have an answer for you, other than to keep responding when you come up, but as far as the nuisance itself, we can look and see how many, how many we have in the code office, or how many, is it a rental property or private property?
I had gotten told back in May, when we talked to Peter, the landlord, he had said, oh, he goes, give us six months, he goes, it's back to rental. However, in the meantime, he went to do a back rent by purchase. Because of Joe threatening that he would start to get cited as well, he's supposed, Peter, the landlord, was supposed to give them a verbal eviction notice. Meanwhile, my stuff is still in hiding, because I'm afraid that they're gonna do damage to my vehicles.
I think our best course action, citations against the landlord, because it's occupied, we can't do our typical public nuisance rather than things, but we can certainly look into citations, working with the DA's office on the criminal side, and see if there's a way to expedite the process with the landlord.
Yeah, because like I said, I mean, the lady that they vandalized in this re, or re, she's eight, her husband just passed away. This woman would not hurt a fly, and they, for no reason vandalized her property. And like I said, I have security cameras up now, and they keep constantly doing damage to my security cameras.
Did you give me an address?
All right.
Did you give me an address, North Fourth?
My address is 420, the property I'm complaining about is 418.
Okay, thank you.
Dave, I have one other thing, I forgot your... I've had several complaints, people have called me about these burning barrels, that it was passed some time ago, that they could have a burning barrel in the yard, a burning pit. Well, the trouble is, they're getting out of hand now, and they've now become burning barrels with no screens on, and flames, like she was just saying, and she isn't even in the area where I got the phone calls from. So I'm thinking maybe we should look into doing away with that. They can have a gas grill and nothing else. I mean, they're too close to other houses, people have to keep their windows shut, because the air blows in their house, and their whole house fills up with smoke.
I actually have pictures...
Get the other record, Mike, it's on the other time. We went through that a lot last year, I'm sorry, somebody else, Harvey?
I, I actually have pictures, because I have my security cameras, of how high these flames are, with these homemade fire pit is what they have, which the cops know that they're not allowed to use it, because basically the rocks, or the brick is crumbling. In front of this fire pit, there is also a gas grill with a propane tank, and there's small children, of course, dogs in it, but I have pictures of these people doing the fire. I have, these people are that bad and that disgusting, they actually are urinating out front on Fourth Street, you know, and I'm not talking two or three-year-old children, the one I got was, was the boyfriend of the one person that lives there, and he looks up at my camera, and he continues to urinate. I'm not being nasty, my daughter's slow, my daughter is under state, okay? If the state would get wind of this, they could turn around, and I can lose my daughter, because she can't live on her own. I'm not losing my daughter over this, you know, because they could feel that she's being threatened, because they had said sexual remarks to her, they've done stuff. I'm like, I've lived there since 2002, and I've never had this problem, never, ever had this problem. My fear is, is if the state gets wind of my daughter, and they feel like she's not in a very safe environment, I can lose her.
I have a question, Rick.
Yeah, go ahead.
That, I thought we did away with that rent-to-own exemption under the rental ordinance, that it still fall under the rental ordinance, even though it's a rent-to-own?
I agree with this, I'm not sure what she's saying, but we'll check in.
But you understand, I was, there was paperwork's going up, that, and they were, that was one of the situations we ran into, that I spoke with Suster about, is that it wasn't, it was an owner-occupied property, technically, and, and there's, it's still up near, whether it's owner-occupied or since it's a rent-to-own property, what the situation is.
Because we got rid of the relative, you know, exemption from the rental permits, and also the rent-to-own...
No, he's still paying the rental permits.
Right, but I'm saying he would fall under the tenant landlord, as long as he has a permit.
That's when we went back and told him that he was liable, because he still was...
He's still the property owner.
He's still the property owner, exactly, that's where, that's where...
Yeah, I'm just saying, that wouldn't get him out of being in trouble for it.
No, he was getting cited also.
The other thing, Ms. Bynum, I would also recommend that you seek legal counsel of your own, who directly address the landlord, too. Certainly, I can vouch for, the city's gonna try to help any way possible, but it sounds like you have some serious allegations, too, from a personal standpoint, so I would recommend seeking counsel, just to see what options you may have as well, and that just strengthens this.
Now, how long would this process take?
What process?
Even for, even to get the property under nuisance, to get them to where they speech up the process of...
It can, it can't be handled under the public nuisance process that we normally handle with blighted properties, because that is for vacant and abandoned properties. This, in this case, there's someone living in the property. So there are other options, and the state continues to add more options to the list, but the main avenue for it, or way we can register for citations, working with the DA's office on a criminal level, and really, the interaction with the landlord.
The only problem is, and it doesn't even have to be us to call the cops, as soon as code shows up, we get the blame of it, because we live right beside them every time, and they're always vandalizing something, or they're flipping my cameras off, or they're trying to spray my cameras, they're doing something, because they always think it's us that's doing it, and it's not, you know, it's the whole, I've got a petition started You know, it's the whole, I've got a petition started with over 15 people saying, hey, we're reaching out for help, because at one time or another, these people's done something different to each person that's, you know, on the block.
But why can't the police do something about those?
They are, whatever they're doing that's illegal, they're doing, but everything she's talking about isn't illegal. It might be immoral, it might be you don't want bad neighbors, but you can't arrest people just for-
They pay the fine, you know, they-
You can't do anything for terrorists.
Yeah, she said that earlier. Please, I'm trying to come up with this.
And really, it's, it's really probably coming down to the landlord needs to evict these tenants, and you have a landlord tenant issue. That's why I'm suggesting you also seek your own counsel, and maybe injunction with, you know, what the city is able to do.
There's legal aid, too.
That's a way to, uh, come at it from multiple directions, so it gets resolved quicker. I, I feel for you, it's a shame when we have bad apples that really hurt the whole rental process.
Who else?
Yes, Victoria Rosenkrantz, San Antonio County Prison Group. Um, we've met before, uh, in County, I just have some questions here. Obviously, we're, um, heading into a deadline here of January, it's been two years since the prison has sustained the fire. Um, most recent articles, Mr. Rechner, I think you had commented, last meeting that we had in June, it was discussed, obviously, the deadline in January, so I guess my question is, um, obviously, the county has had an appraisal done, and a demolition study done on the property. I just spoke with Mr. Commissioner Shopp this evening, they're still in that process, they haven't got the appraisal, and so on. Uh, so I guess hypothetically, they have not, the property is not sold before January, even if it is sold, the bidding process, obviously, that new owner's not going to be able to, um, you know, go in there and revamp this, this property in a short amount of time. So I guess the question is, um, where do we, where do we go from here if this isn't resolved by January? Because-
At this, at this point in time, we have had no contact from the county on anything since that June meeting, when I said that the clock was ticking.
Right.
And nobody has contacted us on anything, other than that they withdrew that $5,000 that they were going to do for some kind of appraisal.
The $5,000, yes, the $5,000 that my group advocated, and I, along, because two days before the deadline, the county hadn't done anything yet, so therefore, I was on the phone and held them accountable to do that application. And yes, they were given $5,000, which would have helped in the whole process to include the new owner. So my frustration here is, um, you know, with this group, I've been the only voice in this community, very disappointed in several entities in this, in this community that have not advocated for this 140-year-old building that sits on the corner. You know, and I don't think that the, you know, the, the option is to tear this property down. You know, we talk about, we hear about tourism in the city, right, I mean, there's a goldmine sitting right there on that corner, and hopefully this, the county can get this appraisal done